Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the approval of minutes.
Motion to approve minutes as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to consent public hearing, discussion, possible action, item A only.
Good evening, commissioners. Mark Roscoe with Development Services, Planner Three. Going to be reading into record consent public hearing items A. There are four plats. Starting off with number two, Azali Oceanside. Can you give me a list here? Azali Oceanside Estates, Block One, Lot 1 through 12. It's a replat of 2.85 acres. It is located north of Santa Fe Street and west of Rope Street. Item number three, under Platts, Tolosso Road Elementary Subdivision, Lot 1A. It's actually a final plat of 12.35 acres located south of IH 37 and west of Tolosso Road. Number four, Gustai Lot 67R, final plat of .208 acres located north of Horn Road and south of Bronner Parkway. Item five, Flower Bluff Estates, Track C of Block H, Lots 4CR and 4DR. It's a replat of .58 acres located north of SPID and east of Waldron Road. All Platts are meeting the Texas Local Government Code and the TRC Review Comments. Staff does recommend approval for all Platts. And any questions for staff at this time?
Commissioners, any questions for staff? I see none. The only question I had was on Azali Estates. I noticed a comment about, on the plat comments about provisions, making sure that the lot widths exceeded 70 feet so that they could install circular drives on the front, in the front of the properties. Has that been confirmed? Everything that I saw was in excess of 70 feet, but just making sure that that's enough room to be able to handle that kind of circular drive.
That's the minimum standard that we're using.
Okay. Because my concerns is just on that particular stretch of Ocean Drive, there's a couple of jogs. And one of the scariest, you know, coming off of Rossiter onto Ocean Drive is a pretty, you know, dangerous turn there, turning right or left because it kind of jogs around right there. And there's some blind spots from fencing and other improvements there on that corner. Rossiter would be further to the south. We're going to have public comment here in a minute.
That's why you don't turn there.
Yes, ma'am.
Second, Bria Whitmire, Development Services Engineer. In the UDC, residential driveways are limited to one per lot, excepting that circular driveways are allowed provided the frontage equals or exceeds 70 foot and all other parameters be met, that meaning the clearance to any intersections. So 70 feet's coming from the UDC.
Is there anything within the UDC that requires either a circular drive or a rear rap driveway?
Not at this time. It doesn't require it, but it requires at least 70 foot for the option of a circular drive.
If anything, this corner lot may not meet the, if you go with a 25-foot offset, and then it's not going to be able to get that circular.
Which the driveway space, especially on the corner lots, that would be reviewed as part of the building permit with the house layout, once we know where the house is going. That would be part of the review, is making sure that all the driveway standards meet the UDC.
My concern would be, you know, if you had a front-facing garage and a driveway, and, you know, somebody having to back out or back in onto Ocean Drive with that blind curve.
Agreed. And that's why I think, there was one project recently where we did allow, we found the rules where it was allowed to do a driveway. Typically, they aren't allowed to have, the house has to front one street or the other, but with that corner lot, if it's reviewed by traffic department, they find it's unsafe to have, there's not enough room for a circular driveway, and it's unsafe to have one where we actually make the circular drive on the corner to connect to both streets. We, I've seen that happen at least one other place where just, that's the only thing that worked to be safe. So that corner lot might be a special case. The rest of them are over 70 feet. Is it just that corner lot that you're concerned? Is that the main one, or the others too?
I mean, just, all of them in general, if, if the builder or whoever decides to build a home there, you know, wants to go ahead and do a front-facing garage and have a driveway, you know, there's nothing prohibiting them from doing it. And I just see it as a public safety issue.
True. We're not making them do a circular driveway. Hmm. We could add that as a condition, I would.
Is it, I don't, uh... Buck, is this the note you're referring to, the last note?
Oh, what is?
Required driveways onto Ocean Drive to be designed and constructed in a manner that allows for vehicle or traffic to turn around.
Oh, there you go.
Okay.
Harry?
That quills my concern.
It's all in the notes.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Okay, go ahead. Commissioner Garza.
Yes, I was just curious, because when I looked into the Google Map on it, that street, I don't have it in front of me, I think it was Mirror, wait, the new street that they were going to be developing? It wasn't on the Google Map, and yet he has it on the plat. So is that something that he's going to be developing? Because it, I'm just, when I saw it on Google Map, I didn't see how they were going to be able to put it on the other Altos Street?
I think what could help is G.I.S. If you could pull up the G.I.S. layer, they can see it maybe a little bit better with the aerial on it, too. Picture Court is a paper street.
So it's been, it's been dedicated before. And so there, just also keep in mind, there was a waiver approved on the corner lot. And so typically, it's a dedication, and you're right, construction.
So when they do develop the homes, there's going to have to be a street that he's going to be putting in, and that's going to?
Well, no, not necessarily, because they do have, it's going to be, the home is, this is one big lot. So they have frontage on this. This one is already paved.
It's a, it's a paper street that nobody needs, and so they'll probably have to apply for a waiver to not build the street.
Okay, okay.
So the access will be from Merrill Court.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I see none. So with that, I will go ahead and open the public comment. We have currently five speakers signed up, but if you didn't get the sign-in sheet, you know, just raise your hand afterwards. First off is Greer Gottlich.
Well, I'll speak a little bit. Your safety concerns are all of ours as well.
But, hold on, please state your name and address.
My name is Greer Gottlich. I'm a new homeowner in this subdivision area on Mavis, and that was our biggest concern, is a safety concern on that S-curve. With the circular drives, I understand that, but still, you've got blind corners on both ends. It's a lot of homes, you know, putting up right there on that bin right there. It's a big concern for us that live in that neighborhood. And there's Seaview right there, short median right there. It's daunting for me as a homeowner. So that's pretty much my biggest thing, is the safety concern for us living in that neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Patricia Collins. Okay. Daniel Shea?
Thank you. My name's Dan Shea, 123 Alta Plaza. And I guess I got the form about two weeks ago, and I called because I thought there was a missing page on it, because it only had the property there. It didn't have anything of the homes. And it says it's going to be 12, 12 properties or 12 homes built on this about 2 point, whatever acres it is. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So when I took it myself then, and I didn't realize that, I guess it wasn't going to be until this past Friday that the actual plot was laid out, and I think you had a copy of that that I just saw. But I, but I just kind of sketched for myself, and I sketched out eight properties on it. And, you know, this is Ocean Drive, this is Corpus Christi. And that's our kind of showcase. And I'd really hate to see, I guess, is there five or eight out in front, or?
Eight lots.
Eight lots facing Ocean Drive, those people coming in and out of the properties. I'd hate to see our showcase being represented by smaller homes so that we could just kind of fit more in there. I think the safety factor as well, and the island in the middle of Ocean Drive that, you know, are separating out the homes, where to turn in and out, I think that may become an issue, too, unless they're talking about taking out the island or separating out so people can make a left-hand turn out of their homes. Again, we just had a major accident there, probably about maybe six, eight weeks ago, where a pickup truck was hit broadside, rolled up near Chris Adler's new home, which fortunately she wasn't there to see. Architectural oversight, making sure that the oversight is going to be, again, appeasing to what is our showcase road there. And if you could just clarify for me, the additional street that y'all were just talking about, I didn't quite understand that.
Technically, we're not supposed to be able to answer questions for you, but she was talking about a different plat. That was for Flower Bluff, so.
Flower Bluff, okay. All right, great. Thank you so much. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mark Gottlich.
Thank you. My name's Mark Gottlich. I live on Denver, 3447. I'm right around the corner from Rossiter. And we've had numerous accidents that are on that S-curve. I don't know if anybody's done a study of how many accidents have actually happened that over the last few years, but that property, and having additional traffic coming and going out of there, accessing and egress, is going to cause some congestion that worries me from standpoint of safety. My profession for 30 years with health and safety, and so my first thought is, are we going to be able to take care of our citizens as we should? I think that's our first, you know, act as city members, is to take care of the citizenry. So I think it's a little over, you know, crowded. Of course, not knowing what types of homes are going to be there, it's hard to even understand the, you know, you say a circular drive. To me, 70s feet is not very much. You've got two cars, a driveway, I don't know, it seems pretty congested. So my concern is with that. The other thing is, this happens so quickly, there's a lot of people that don't know really what's going on. You see, there's a nice group of people, but not nearly as many in the neighborhood if they'd known sooner that this was going to be happening. They had other previous engagements, out of town, couldn't be here. We have somebody that's going to speak directly to you for us. But I personally think that the members of the neighborhood would like to have an opportunity to speak with the developers, to see indeed what they're planning to put, because they're going to be part of our neighborhood. And we'd sure like to understand kind of what their plans are, to help maybe give them an idea of what we would think would be neighborly. So if there's an opportunity to do that, I think we'd probably like to do that. If that's the case, then we'd like to see if this is tabled to the next meetings, that we'd have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Lerman.
Thank you. I share the same concerns that you've heard.
Andy, if you could just state your name and address.
I'm sorry. Andy Lerman, 3360 Mavis. This came as a complete surprise to everybody in this neighborhood. I've been living on Mavis for 30-plus years, and that lot has been vacant. And, you know, there's always been a curiosity, what's going to happen to it. The density of putting 12 homes in this area, just envision, if you're going down the S-curve, people going in and out of these homes, whether it's a circular driveway or not. We know they're not going to back out on Ocean, unless they really want to risk their life, which I don't think you're going to do that. But you've got people doing 45 to 50 miles an hour right past, as you're coming around that S-curve, and they're going to be, they're going to be having to stop with allowing people to either get, go in or go out of these eight lots that are on Ocean Drive. I think that's extremely dangerous. I didn't see anything in the comments, and maybe, you know, in my review of the platting requirements that the city has in the UDC and the state under Section 212. I don't see where anything was even talked about about safety issues. Maybe I misread the comments, but, you know, the requirements of the comments did not indicate that anybody did any kind of a study on the density of putting this many houses on such a small area. And think about people that are going to be able, or having to go through Seaview. That's the first turn before you get to Rossiter. But I think most of the people are going to go through Seaview, because that's where the four lots are on Mavis. And you've got, you know, people stopping and turning. It just doesn't seem to me that this plan, or the comments, can, at least from what I read, unless I'm missing something, address those issues. And I think that's a significant issue for all of us, is the safety issue. We don't know anything about the size of the houses. We don't know about the drainage. We don't know about the water runoff. This is so, so general that a layperson, unless they have the sophistication that you guys have in volunteering, which we all appreciate you taking the time to do that, but as laypeople, you know, where is that addressed in there? Now, maybe it is, and maybe it's not. But I think that we would all like to know that. But are these going to be two-story homes? Are these going to be one-story homes? That's why I agree with Mark, is the developer, it would have been nice if the developer would have approached owners in that area and said, listen, we want to be good neighbors. We understand you're going to have concerns. Let's talk, and let us tell you what we're planning. Nothing. And, you know, it's a kind of, we're in the blind. And I'm really concerned about the safety issue. I just think that somebody needs to...
Chairman, those three minutes, just.
Yeah, we've got seven seconds, so wrap up your comments.
My seven seconds would be that I would ask that the commission table this, allow the homeowners to have a discussion with the developers, to talk about these issues, which are significant. I don't see the rush in approving a replat tonight, so that's what I would request. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate your time.
Appreciate it, Mr. Lerman. Would anybody else like to speak on any of the items on the consent agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none. I do have a follow-up question. What is the current base zoning? So, and just for an explanation of what RS6 is, RS6, it means that 6,000 square-foot lots, or with, is there any minimum requirements for the size of houses on those 6,000 square-foot lots? Yeah.
There's not a minimum size. One comment that Mark made a bit ago is that the replat changed it from seven lots to eight lots. So there was already seven lots there. We squeezed in. So it was a note. Also, to the, to the comment of the safety, I absolutely understand where you were coming from that. Guilty of going down Ocean Drive too fast myself, but the issue is that the trip hazards, the trip analysis is triggered at 500. So that, it doesn't really trigger a traffic analysis until you build, say, an apartment complex that's bringing in 500 trips. So this is such a small development, it doesn't flag by following the rules. We're just, we don't make the rules, we're following the rules. So it, it didn't trigger a traffic analysis because of the size of it. As far as the driveway spacings, again, following the UDC, it fits. I'm not aware of if it's one-story or two-story houses yet. We haven't gotten those plans that I'm aware of. But it did go from seven lots to eight lots. So it's not as much of a change as, it looks like a big change, but plot-wise, it actually didn't change that much, if that helps.
Can you bring up the plat? Again, scroll down to the map.
Oh, is there a proof, proof bottom?
No, unfortunately, we can't. But I kind of know your questions, and I'm going to try to address them as best as I can.
The Platts right here, the width of these lots, it was, should have been consistent with what's previous along Ocean Drive.
So currently, on, from what I can see from here, the smallest lot that's proposed is 6,448 square feet? Okay.
Yes.
I'm going to provide some comments, because I know you guys have concerns, and quite frankly, I agree with a lot of your concerns. If this was a zoning case, it would be different, but we have current base zoning that allows a property owner to develop this development. Everything that they've done thus far fulfills the requirements of the UDC, Texas State and Local Government Code. And unfortunately, we don't have a whole lot of, I mean, we would be subjecting ourselves to litigation if we denied property owners' rights for a piece of property that they purchased that already had a base zoning of RS6. Now, if they were coming to change zoning or do something of that nature, then, you know, a lot of these concerns, we have a lot more flexibility to be able to address some of these concerns and deny that type of thing. But unfortunately, in this situation, you're probably going to have some neighbors, so.
Yeah.
And we can't table it because there's a, there's a state mandated shot clock that we have to, you know, so long as they've provided all the information, that we have to respond to them in a certain amount of time. So.
Actually, I was going to ask Buck or someone, can you, I know it's 30 days, state law, if it meets all the requirements, we are legally required to approve it, but do you know where we're at on the shot clock?
Yes. So this, so this is a, is a plat. So Platts are administrative in nature and not legislative. And so whenever an applicant submits a plat that meets all the legal requirements, it's subject to approval. And so the role of the Planning Commission for Platts is just to confirm whether, so staff can, staff reviews it, make sure it confirms with the law, then you're, or staff reviews it for compliance of state law, then Planning Commission confirms that and approves. If Planning Commission found that it didn't comply with state law, then they would have a legal reason to deny it. And as for the shot clock, there is a 30-day shot clock from date of application. This plat was submitted on January 11th of 2024, so it's, it'll be automatically approved by state law. If it's not approved by ballpark, February 10th, they'll get the calendar up.
That's what I was going to ask, just in case anybody didn't hear that. If we didn't take action on it by February 11th, then it's automatically approved by state law?
Okay, well.
They might have asked for extension, because there was, there was another, there was an easement review going on, and that typically takes two weeks. This is also public notice, that takes another two weeks. So definitely, it wouldn't happen within the 30 days. So whenever that situation happens, the applicant will ask for the extra 30 days. And we also have that in the application as well. I was trying, I was going through the notes here, because typically, we would have it written in the notes, on the comments.
Okay. Well, with that, somebody else have any questions or comments for staff? I see none. I'll entertain a motion to, for the consent agenda, items two through five.
Move to approve as read.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
We'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign, motion passes. Moving on to the director's report.
Good evening. It is evening. Mike Dice, Assistant Director of Development Services. There is no report today, other than, I believe Al has reached out to you. I don't know if he reached out to anybody else, but he will begin briefing on the master plan and impact fee discussions that are going on with the SEAC committee, starting at the next meeting, and that will be wrapped into the director's report. So just to give you guys a heads up, don't miss those meetings.
Is that like a five-minute briefing, or like a 15-minute?
Well, it depends. So. It depends. So I think that the goal of the meeting is to make sure that everybody on Planning Commission is engaged through the process. I know that there was possibly some angst with the way that things were handled in the past, and he just wants to make sure that everybody is aware of what's there, where we're at on the potential impact fee, where it may be with a trust fund, a hybrid, whatever it may be. We're starting to get in the meat of that discussion. So he just wants to make it clear to y'all and keep you all engaged on those items.
Well, the next SEAC meeting is on the 15th.
Correct.
So they've already had one?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have access to listening to that?
Could you turn on your mic, please? Thank you.
Can we have access to listening to those meetings? Because like, I know the last one we had, I wasn't able to attend it. And, I mean, I can't always say that I can attend them, but I would really like to have the time to...
The minutes are on our, Developing Our Future website, and they're...
But they're not, they're not videotaped, like?
No.
No, they're recorded audio only.
We haven't graduated to that yet. Unfortunately, SEAC's not even, we don't even put the agendas online, so.
I did want to ask just one question. I got an invite for the next, whatever we call it, the meeting with us and council, and it wasn't until like April or May?
Correct.
Is that the first official meeting that we're going to have?
That's, that's similar to the joint meetings we had with y'all at the ABC Center. So what that's going to discuss is what SEAC has landed on. So we still have the meetings to go through SEAC, to talk about the fees, to talk about whatever funding mechanism comes out of that. And then that'll be the briefing with Planning Commission and council before it's actually taken to council.
And is, are we just expecting one of those, and then it'll probably be on the next Planning Commission? Or is there going to be multiple?
My understanding is there may be multiple.
Okay.
It may be a quick, I mean, we don't really know at this point if it's going to be a quick conversation, or it's going to be a really in-depth conversation. You know, ultimately, if the SEAC recommends we don't do impact fees and we stick with trust funds, it'll be very quick, because SEAC at that point no longer exists under state law. And we wouldn't actually take anything. And we wouldn't actually take anything, per se, to council. We want to brief them on the action, but we're, we're still in that decision phase. We want to make sure that CAC has all the information that they've requested, that everybody goes through, again, comparing other cities, what the CIP may incur. It's a lot of discussion. So we just want to make sure that if we get to that point, that either an impact fee, a hybrid, or a trust fund, we still have, we still have those meetings between planning commission and council. It's a lot easier to do the joint session, because we do have a number of attendees who like to get in the weeds, and it's a lot easier to get in the weeds while you're really focused on it than it is after three hours of D cell comments.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
No problem.
If there's no future agenda items, this meeting is now adjourned.